Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 16, 2017 zoning Board of Appeals public hearings. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight. First, we have a case that hasn't opened yet, 18-17, Joe Rodriguez, 15 Marguerite Road. There is a letter in the file from Dan Merrick. On behalf of the applicant, we request that the board continue the August 16, 2017 hearing for 15 Marguerite without discussion until your next meeting on September 6. He couldn't, Dan couldn't be present on our, tonight. So, that, I know we have a neighbor here for that. So, that's the reason, the engineer who's representing the applicant couldn't be here tonight. So, how's our agenda looking for, you know, we have Burns, right, on the 6th?
Yeah. I'll be on the 3.
We have one?
I'll be on the 3 by the 6th.
This will be 3. So, we have Burns and what else?
A new one, 1079 West Street.
What is that?
Special apartment.
Okay. That's it then for that night?
Okay.
Anything else left? We got pushback.
Okay.
Will we need to get a reminder?
No, this is going to be your reminder. So, September 6th, our hearings are 7:00 PM in this room. But, I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to continue the opening of the public hearing for case number 18-17 to September 6, 2017, 7:00 PM in this room.
Second.
All right. So, September 16th is the, September 6th is the day we're going to open the hearing, 7:00 PM in this room, which is...
Okay. Great.
And if you have any doubt, you can call the office or check their, the agendas are posted online, or you can call the office and ask. They'll have the information if you have any doubt.
So, if there was a chance that you couldn't be here on September 6th, would you be able to submit writing?
You could write, you could all, it's always good practice to submit any comments you have in writing and to come, but that way it's in the file too, and so...
Does it have to wait until September 6th?
Nope. You could submit them whenever you want.
Do it tomorrow morning.
Tonight, if, you could do it tonight. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a new case, number 17-17, an application from John Sanzi with respect to the property located at 21 Federal, 29 Federal Street, Assessor ID MAP 18, Lot 112, in the zoning District GR. It's an application requesting a special permit under Section 94A of the zoning bylaw to allow the extension of a non-conforming, single-family dwelling. Anybody here for this case? Are you kidding? That doesn't happen often. No? You didn't hear anything?
I'm, Amy, vote to continue for lack of information.
Can we, can we just hear the other cases tonight?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. We can say something if somebody comes late. Yeah.
Never happened in a long time.
Maybe the train's late, right?
Yeah, it could be.
Our next case is an application from John Looney, case number 19-17, with respect to the property at 7 Longwood Lane, Assessor MAP 7, Parcel 40, in a zoning District residence R. It's an application for a special permit under Section 5B2 of the zoning bylaw to allow the conversion of a three-car garage into an in-law suite. I know somebody's here for this one. All right. Good.
The whole nine yards.
Come up to the microphone, please, and name, address, and whatever you want to present.
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Looney. I live at 7 Longwood Lane in Walpole. And as you just stated, we recently submitted an application for a special permit to convert a three-car garage into an in-law suite for my mother-in-law, Mary Hayes, who is here. And I guess just a couple of points that I'd like to make. There will be no changes to the exterior of the home, with the exception of adding windows. But visually, the structure will not change. It is solely the conversion of the three-car garage into a suite. And then the other point is that I think I also included in the packets some photos of the property that, that shows the driveway. One of the questions that came up during the process was ample parking. And I, so I included photos that shows that there, there is ample parking at the property.
You're a good son-in-law.
Yes, he is.
I try.
Yeah, so I think this is, we've now had two or three of these. This is a new bylaw that we enacted last year, I believe. So, I'm sure you've read it. It's pretty specific on kind of the criteria you have to meet, and then also the rules and regulations going forward with it.
Yes.
So, I just want to always make sure people, people are aware of those, just so they know. So, it looks like the plan, you're actually taking off the garage and rebuilding it? Is that what you're doing, or?
No.
Okay.
No. It's, so nothing on the exterior will, will change, so the...
Yeah, I was looking at the plan. Maybe I was just confused when it said new and, which is fine. I mean, I think there was some confusion by maybe the town engineer also on that.
So, was there, is there something on the specific plan, A1 or A2, that you had a question?
No, it was, it was on the legend. It had like existing walls, construction to be removed, and new construction.
Oh, I see.
And when it has new construction, some of that has, like outside walls look as new. Again, it wasn't, it wasn't, I looked at the dimensions, it's the same, so it wasn't a big deal.
Sure.
I just wasn't sure if that, you know, because it, it looks like it says new crawl space too. So, I thought maybe there's like a new foundation going in, but...
But maybe it's a new floor up.
Ah, oh, so to match, because now the garage is down. That makes sense. Yep. Okay.
I don't have a zoning book.
Did you take yours home?
There's my pile I took home, it's right there.
All right. I brought an extra one.
I didn't take it home.
Someone collected it then.
Sorry. I thought it was in there, because I just didn't even touch it.
Yeah, that, 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 that's why I was confused. That's why maybe I saw that and thought it was new construction. So, you know, so it really is just a kind of a change inside and, and that one note you made on the exterior.
Exactly.
Just so I clear for, you know, the, the ownership requirement is no accessory in-law suite shall be held in separate ownership from the principal dwelling located in a single-family home occupied by individuals within a third degree of kinship. Home had to be constructed with a valid building permit. The property owner shall record a certified copy of the decision granting the accessory in-law suite, and certified copy shall be filed with the Department of Inspection Services, where they'll keep a master list. And when ownership of the property changes, the new owner should notify the building commissioner so as to update the accessory in-law suite. So, you saw...
I did, yes.
How many square feet is this?
Is what?
Three car garage.
No, it's, 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 I know, 32 by 24, so whatever that basically is, so...
I went to Walpole High, I'm toast.
I think between 600 and 700.
Yeah, 600 something. 600? Thank you. That's accessory, a minimum, the accessory suite shall be a minimum of 250 square feet, no larger than 1,000, or 33% of the total building size in the dwelling, so... I don't think we have those calculations, but I mean, it is...
Does it, is it? Is it a loft?
It was four, right? There's no loft. Above the garage is actually the master bedroom. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a...
How many dimensions?
Under C. There shall be no more than two exterior landings, which may be covered, and shall not exceed 50 square feet in area, not within the setbacks. Any proposed addition does keep it in all dimensional requirements. No more than one water meter. And, no, yeah, okay. So, I get, yeah, the dimension, you know, the dimensions aren't on here, other than it's 34 by 20, whatever you said, 4, 32 by 24, which is between 250 and 1,000. Yeah, the house is, I think the pictures are, unless the house was 1,800 square feet, 600 square feet would be 33% of that. That would, that would be your minimum. The house is clearly bigger than 1,800 square feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, they only got little kids, so it doesn't look like that's a problem.
We certainly could have them put it on the final plan if that, if it ends up being what, where we go.
I just asked about cars, because we're only allowed three cars per house. Does it, does this new bylaw, did that address that? I don't remember.
Well, I mean, there's, actually, it's the garage, it's not...
No, but I mean, three cars per house, period.
Yeah.
I think they did change it. I've seen four at your house. We have like 10. I wish they'd all leave. I keep begging.
I think that, I don't think that was how many cars you could have. I think that was...
No, it's three, three vehicles.
That was garages.
I never...
You come out wearing that.
No, I just don't concern you.
No, it's not, yeah, no. We've had, this is our third or fourth one. Anyways, while we're at it, we have a couple comments from town board, town departments, police department, do not have any public safety concerns. The conservation had, was not within their jurisdiction, they had no comment. Fire department reviewed the application and the plan, and as noted, they've actually approved the plans for life safety device locations. The town engineer had two comments. Applicant should be required to submit a proposed plot potential in the footprint of the proposed addition in order to ensure that no permanent structure is built into the easement. This easement contains an active sewer main and cannot be blocked or obstructed. I, I think that was a confusion, that she thought there was, that was a new addition just because it said a new...
I see. Yep.
Plan should show the existing sewer connection as it relates to the location of the proposed addition, as the sewer currently comes out of the left side of the home and connects into the sewer main and the easement. It may be necessary to reroute the sewer. So, I think her confusion may have just been that she saw that foundation plan had a new...
Yeah.
Yeah, which, you know, I understand why she said, you know, it says new crawl space, so...
In the middle.
I don't think either of those comments are really applicable now. It looks like you have one new...
New bathroom.
Oh, that little stair off the side, but that's 50 by 3.6, which is less than 50 square feet, so...
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, everything's new inside, but it's, it's in the existing footprint, yeah.
But on that question, kind of a combination of both, you know, the parking as well as the easement. I mean, looking at this house, I would think that somebody, I, so I'm assuming you're abandoning the use of your garage to provide this.
Correct.
But, but somebody else acquiring the house would look at that and probably want a garage. How are you going to, you know, somewhere on the house? Are you going to, no provision, you're not intending to build a garage later on?
If they built a garage that met dimensional requirement and everything?
Well, I mean, only because the easement, you know, I'm just curious...
Well, I mean, that would have, they'd have to, when they went to get the building...
The building permit, they'd have to deal with that.
If it was a new structure, they'd have to submit a site plan and...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
If they have any intention today, I wanted to know about it.
Yeah.
If they don't, and, but they change their mind tomorrow, well, they can change their mind tomorrow.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to know if this, to understand this plan, so no provision for a garage, this is just going to be... That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, there's clearly plenty of space on this. It's a big lot, you know, it's almost an acre, right there.
Well, he's worried about the easement, probably.
About the driveway.
Yeah, and also they could whip, put it around in the back.
Yeah, you could put it back in the back there.
Yeah.
But yeah, and I mean, clearly, it's already on the plan.
The easement's on the plan.
So, they, they know what...
Did you find it at the cost? I couldn't find it.
Um, yeah. Anyone else here to speak on this application? Maybe the person who's going to live there?
Sure.
No, no, no. He...
Come on, Mrs. Hayes.
It's always, it's always good to have support for an application.
Sure. Yeah, come on up.
Are you going to, are you fighting it?
No, she's not fighting it.
Make sure there's good pay for the babysitting. We put that in the conditions.
The babysitter. Or maybe the cook and the cleaner.
There you go.
You're in support. I think the first we've seen a three-car garage converted. That's a nice, that's a, that's a nice space.
Good digs.
Yeah, it is good digs, I imagine, yes.
Great kids.
Yes, yeah, yes. They're, yeah, they're, you're all lucky. You're all very lucky to be able to do it.
I have any questions, or may I?
No, no, I'm just kidding. I don't, I think it's, you know, other than the provisions we read, that would be conditions. I mean, you know, the size of it, you know, I'm not, I think it's between 250 and 1,000. I think the picture is...
That's your testimony, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Because the house is bigger than...
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, we could pull up the assessor's record if we really wanted to, but I'm sure it would support that easily. See if there's anything else, any, anything else from the board? No?
No, I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I did get calls on this. Two phone calls.
Glad people are taking advantage of the bylaw. And, excuse me, so I think it, yeah...
I think we need another application.
Yeah? Why, do you have one?
Yeah, mine.
Yeah? We, you know, we'd all have to accuse ourselves, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Everybody. Yeah, it'd be a zero person void.
I could, I could stand there.
Yeah. All right. Anything?
No. I'm ready to vote.
Bring it on. Go ahead. Make your...
Here's my motion. Do I have a thing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for case number 19-17 with respect to the property located on 7 Longwood Lane.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I got a siren.
Any discussion on it? I mean, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yep. I agree. I think subject to the conditions that you referenced, otherwise I think it's...
Pretty much of the...
Yeah, are we going to impose anything in addition to the bylaws?
I mean, I think as he stated here, that the, part of the plans, you know, the exterior...
For the plans.
But the plans don't indicate square footage and stuff, so we'd have to say per applicant.
We detail it out.
Yeah.
We just understand what the conditions are, we...
I mean, we certainly could stipulate that. Final permit plans should have the square footage of the, the in-law suite and square footage of the house on it, just so...
Yeah.
That's what we should have.
So, is that, I'm sure, when you do your final...
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure when Kootenai Bay Design, when they, I'm sure they do a lot of work in Walpole. Somebody you know?
Yes, yeah, yeah. He, he actually did the plant, my mother lives on the Cape, and we did something somewhere there.
My husband's from Kootenai.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm down and found with some, some days.
I work in Mashpee.
Okay.
It's funny to say...
Yeah, I know. Usually it's the other way around. You don't see too many...
I have a lot of family on the Cape and in Mashpee. My brother teaches at Mashpee High School.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so...
So, I'm, on the, this, we'll put that as a condition, just on the final plans, to show...
Final square footage of the, of the...
Of the in-law suite?
Yep.
And square footage of the, of the house.
Sure.
Existing house. And that way, there's no question.
Sure. Any other conditions?
Other than...
The ones in the, in the section, in the bylaw.
Just cite the whole...
Just in the 52?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, like in our findings, it's, watch, 15,000 square feet. It was between 250 and 1,000.
He's reading through this.
It was one...
So, these are our findings?
The requirements, yeah. And one landing that was less than 50 square feet, and the...
But specifically on the observation, the alter, I, I think here, what we presented, in terms of the findings, I'd like to tie specifically what we get in testimony, as opposed to just what's in the book. I mean, what's in the book tells us what we have to include...
Yeah.
...as items, but how we found it is based on what we hear, so...
Yeah, but really doesn't matter, because we could, we have the condition, whatever size. Like, if we wanted to give it more, we, it says, requirements marked as actual may be altered as a condition of the special permits.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
So, I think from public hearing, some of the, the reasons why we're proposing that we're approving it, which we're going to put to a vote, is the addition of windows that will make it appear to be part of the main house.
Keep the outside appearance of a single family.
It's an existing structure that's part of the house, already looks like a single family.
Mm-hmm.
What else is in favor?
I don't think we... I don't think there's anything else.
I, I think the dimensions comply with the bylaw. We'll reference the roughly, I forget what the figures were.
There's no change.
It doesn't even...
There's no change, no change in the exterior.
Right, yeah. Even if, we could, there, even if the house was 1,000, we could grant 600.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a condition, but we don't need to.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other findings?
No.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to grant the special permit for case number 19-17 with respect to property at 7 Longwood Lane, Walpole, for a special permit under 5B2 of the zoning bylaw, conversion of a three-car garage into an in-law suite, based on the conditions and findings discussed. Same.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Should be done tomorrow for you to move in.
Yeah.
You can now live in the garage.
Put a cot in there.
Who would have thunk?
Yeah, what a thunk.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
When did you have a...
Have a good day.
They, they know it gets filed?
Yeah, so just the process is, decision gets written up, signed, and then filed, usually takes...
Well, within 14 days, I'll have it, we'll have it written up and filed with the clerk. Then, when it's filed, the clerk, you know, all these other people in the room have an opportunity to appeal. I'm just kidding. So, directly, it could be appealed, at which point, that if you started any construction, that's more or less your own liability. But, so, you know, it's your choice once it's filed, whether to proceed or not.
It could technically be appealed within what time?
20 days.
20 days from filing with the board.
From filing. So, 14, we have up to 14 days to file, and then 20 days after it files.
Got it.
And you can check with the office when it gets, you get a copy, right?
Yeah, they got that.
You get a copy once we file it with the clerk, so you'll know when it's filed and when the 20 days is running.
But she was old, and my, and I...
All right. Good luck all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other two, he said she's still old, I'm sorry, I know she's hanging by the thread.
All right. Down to two. Welcome back. Our next hearing is a continuance of an application from William Germain, case number 6-17, regarding 86 Oak Street. Welcome back, guys. I know you submitted a plan today.
Yep.
The town engineer hasn't reviewed it yet, so...
The changes that we made to the plan was just to, instead of one wall, we have two walls, as you guys suggested.
Okay. I'm just saying, we have, the town engineer hasn't reviewed it? We're, we're certainly...
That's fine.
Look at it now?
If you want to make it conditional that she's happy, that's fine. I mean, every item that was on the list, I think we have addressed. So, one of, if you look at the plan, what we did is that we are proposing one five-foot wall at the very bottom, and another wall that is going to be four feet behind.
You can just hold on one second while we get a copy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I share here, or what?
Thank you.
All right.
So, the big, the biggest concern on our last meeting was the fact that we were staying with one nine-foot wall or 10-foot wall. So, the, the consensus was that in order to move forward, the better way to do it was to come up with another wall. So, what we ended up doing is we left the first wall as it was, we shortened it, and then we proposed another wall five feet away, which makes it 15 feet from the property lines on both directions. So, by doing that, we proposed the five-foot wall at the lower part and the four-foot wall above. Between the two walls, we have proposed evergreen plants, so that it just, they don't leave it empty. And then on the bottom part, we have proposed 28 two-inch hemlock trees to provide screening for the wall. The expectation is that once those hemlocks grow, we put it on a pattern like five foot on center, scattered, so that it would provide enough density later on that it's not going to be so much on your face to the neighbors, so kind of provide some screening. The other item that, that, I mean, on the list from the July 25th, the town engineer wanted to make sure that the developer engineer should contact the department to witness a soil testing. There is a note on the plan to that effect, and she had seen it, and the comment that she had made is that this could be a condition of approval. There should be a, a minimum of two feet separation to high-ground water, which is shown on the plan. And again, she's recommended that this could be a conditional item. Item number three would be, the number and location for each of this should be shown on the plan, which is already shown, and again, can be conditional, because without the testing... The other, item number four, the revised plan shows a landscape area. She's asking that we make it more clearly than any of it on a plan, and the planting that is required. She's opting that this can be conditional, but based on our last meeting, you guys suggested that we better show it on the plan, and we have shown the limit of the landscape, and that's why we added those trees over there. Another item was the erosion control barrier to be extended to protect the two of others. Before, the erosion control barrier was stopping at the shed, because the town engineer recommended it, we extended that all the way down to the extent of the fill or removal that's going to be happening on the site. By putting these two walls, we reduce the amount of cubic yards that we're going to need approval on, just because now you're taking that section off, because you're going to have a gap of five feet that you are not going to need to fill, but the amount is small, it's shown on the plan, and we showed the calculations, so, right now would be like 624 cubic yards, that is the approval for. And by putting the two walls, the second wall would be 15 feet from the property line, which is the requirement that you have for side setbacks.
So the second wall is conforming?
Yes.
Okay, so it's only the first wall that we're permitting, and the fill?
That's correct.
And the fill amount reduced from how much?
Was, okay, give me one second.
Said, it was said 725.
It was, before was 675, now it's going to go to 624, so...
Thank you.
Close to 51 cubic yards. We tried to line up an excavator to even do the testing, but there was not enough time to have it done, so, if it is that the board would like to make it conditional that, you know, you give us the appro, voted based on the understanding that the town engineer would not have a problem with it. We didn't touch the first wall, as far as the location setbacks. We clarified, as you requested, that we're saying proposed four-foot concrete wall, and then the item underneath is proposed five-foot concrete wall, so it's going to be a poured concrete wall.
Well, first, thank you, at least you, you made an attempt to listen to the comments, and at least revise it based on those comments. Yeah, everybody's been to all these, right? Okay, all right.
Just a question I have, are you, given this configuration, the height of the two walls, are you, is it your position that you don't need the variance anymore, or that you still require the variance?
So, the building inspector, because you have two walls, one is five feet, and the other one is four feet, one way to look at it would be that, you know, only the first wall is in violation, the other one is not. If you want to be more conservative, and you would say, well, the two walls are connected to each other because they are so close to each other, so, it would be up to how you guys feel, if it is that you feel that, you know, we don't need the variance, we would be, there is no problem with us. I just don't know how the building inspector, when I approached the building commissioner at the time, he said that it would be up to the board, so, by coming in front of you, if you decided that we didn't need a variance, just a special permit, that he was going to be fine with it. That's why we put it on the last.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think, I guess in my mind, I'm still wondering whether the, we're evaluating this now on the variance standard or not, and like, whether we have, whether there's a...
Well, what would, what would take it out of the variance?
Well, whether the, if you're permitted to have a wall...
Oh, no, special permit for the fill.
Right.
Variants for the, for the wall.
I thought that the, I thought you were allowed maybe up to six feet in the setback, but I'm not sure.
Offense.
Offense, retaining wall.
It's contradictory.
Setback can contain a retaining wall.
It's a six.
That's why we did it five, to be on the safe side. That's why we proposed it five, to be on the safe side, so we were not borderline.
The street, right, three feet between the street and the setback, or six feet for any others?
For retaining wall, I thought it was four. Well, it's, there's, anything over four has to be engineered, has to be, has to be an engineered.
Yeah, and there is a note on the plan.
Where there's the stairwell?
Yeah.
How high is that?
We have shown over there that you have the top of wall at elevation 101, and the bottom of the wall at elevation 97, or, and the stairs would be 96 and a half. If you look at the contour, it's 96, and the bottom of the wall, so, anywhere between 96 and a half to 97 to 101, so you're talking about four foot high.
Okay.
That's why it wasn't even for another wall.
What says? What's supposed to be in harmony with the table?
The original, the original request was, the reason being that there was not adequate space for children to play, and that posed a hardship. I feel the same way now that I did then, that there's more than adequate place, and...
I think it's all good.
If we got to the driveway, I think that could be taken up and redone, if need be, at far less expense and far less detriment to the people that live behind him than to go to this extravagant length. I would not want to be behind this home, even though it is laid, and I do think that that does pose a detriment to the neighborhood, may not from the front, but those people from the rear. Whether it's a nine feet or a five or four, the trees are no trees, fence and roof fence. The original, the original request was, in the need be, for adequate place for children to play, and I think you bought the house like that, there is a drop in the back, I'm not disputing that at all, but based on your original request, I think you have more than adequate place for children to play. They could ride a bicycle, you can skateboard, you can do a lot right on that driveway that you go in, and it is a circular one, that could be, that could be handled very nicely. To the right is a fair amount of property, you have a shed, and there's all kinds of, I don't know where that fill came from, but where that to be emptied out, and a lawn put there, there's more than adequate room for children, that's likely.
The reason, the reason why we're trying to do this is trying to avoid to have the kids near the driveway for any, any eventuality, and as far as keeping the safety concerned, even though the commissioner, last time that we were at the meeting, suggested that there is no requirement for us to put a fence on this wall, we are still putting a fence, and it's on the plan that we're going to be putting a chain link fence, because the owner feels strongly about the security and the safety of his family and his kids, and, you know, having four, four, four young kids around...
I do understand that, sir, but everybody has driveways with their children, and everybody... I'm just, I'm not disputing anything.
I understand, yeah.
You've done a nice job, you've tried very hard to come up with, you know, whatever suggestion made by the board.
Yep.
But my feeling on this, based on the original request, there is adequate room, there is no need. You bought the property like this, it's a big piece of property, very flat piece of property, and if you were to clear up whatever that fill or whatever you dug up there, if you were to clear that and put a lawn, you could even reconfigure that driveway, but that's a beautiful driveway for kids to ride a bicycle up and down, so we got them being on the street. You've got a beautiful piece of property, so do...
Some of the problems is very dangerous in the front, so I think it's still hardship, because you have people coming in and out, it's a blind spot, I don't want my kids to get run over, so I mean, I mean, there's a lot of land, but it's mostly pavement, people coming in and out of there, I don't want my kids to get run over.
There's a lot of area there, sir.
I saw a lot of grass.
And that area, but where the shed is, that's piled high with some kind of, I don't know whether it's what you initially started to take out before you were going, but if you would empty that, that is a fairly good-sized lawn, you could put up a volleyball thing there, you could play croquet.
And the problem with the backyard still remains.
And everybody's driveway can miss out on a street, people who live on main streets, you know, I have a friend of mine that lives on Bullard Street, that's a very difficult street to go by, her driveway goes in, and at the, and she has grandchildren, and what she does, she takes two of those cones, that's right, probably 10 feet in from the street, and that's as far as the children go, but you've got a beautiful place there for kids to ride bikes, skateboards, roller skate, whatever they want to do.
I'm just trying to make it safe for everybody, even the neighbors, I mean, all the neighbors like this idea, I mean, they don't have a problem with it, they're actually happy that I'm trying to make it better and safer for the whole area, not just my kids, I mean, when they, when there's no one, they come over, and it's very dangerous, you know?
I think the thing is, if, there's two issues, there's the wall issue, right, and then, and then there's the fill issue, but, you know, just take the wall issue for a sec. You could probably do it in a way and change it that you wouldn't, that you'd comply and not need a variance, I mean, it may, it may instead of be 50 feet of a yard, it may be 40 feet of a yard, I mean, that, that's one issue, you know, the variance is a tough, tough hurdle to get over, you know, so, you know, that's one, and the two is the fill one, and the fill one, I mean, as Sue reminded me, is here, because you got in trouble because you were doing fill and needed, you know, and needed to come, not that you probably didn't know you were doing anything that wasn't by the code, but, you know, and again, that's a special permit, not, you know, the same type of hurdle to get over, but, given the circumstances, it's still a challenging one, so, there's probably a way on the wall to design something that meets zoning, I mean...
I, I, I mean, the fact that my, we were...
It's the hardship if, I mean...
We were looking at, the maximum that was allowed was six feet, we didn't propose the first wall six feet, we proposed it at five feet, a foot lower than the six foot.
Have you reviewed these amended plans with the building inspector? Have you discussed with them whether...
We had initially talked to, that's what, we had talked to him initially, as far as the, how we were going to have the two walls. And when I spoke with him, he...
Yeah, was that something over how many?
I mean, we've done everything, we've given multiple meetings, we've done everything that you all want, all the neighbors are on board, they're all happy to even have a signed letter, the one that, the one that's closest to the property is Frankie, that's the letter that you have, he's the one that's most effective for this, this project.
Do we have that last?
I mean, I mean, it's showing less water than it is now, it's all a plus, doing this project for everybody.
What the big, or Coleman work is... Yes, we had a letter from Joe and Judy.
Yeah, we talked to all the neighbors, they're all on board.
They have no issues with the proposed work, as long as the wall stays 10 feet from our property line, we support our neighbors' argument.
He's the one right behind me, so he's the one that would be the most effective.
And we have done that, we're staying 10 feet off from...
Yeah, so actually, yeah.
That was an interesting choice to write there, let it on. What is the...
On the plan, it shows that it's going to be a big drop in less than water, too.
Where's it going? Where's it going?
We have, we have proposed a drywall on the site, one drywall, yeah, it's only one, and we provided drainage calculations to the town engineer, that she reviewed, and she was fine with it, we didn't get any comments on the drainage.
You're saying that the water running off the property will be, your recharge, your recharge on the property will increase?
Okay, so the post-development runoff conditions will not worsen from the prior original conditions prior to fill, so, we prepared the report proving to the town engineer that doing the drainage prior construction and after construction, that the conditions would be better after construction than prior. Not doing anything, it still will leave the issue of the backyard being so steep over there, so, I think we've come so many times over here, and, I mean, we have exhausted all the possibilities, you know, we will allow for the board to make a decision, move on with it.
Well, I think, I mean, my concern, I think expressed at the very first meeting, was that the project wouldn't meet the standard for variance if there was a wall in the setback, because, as was already expressed, you know, wanting more area for your kids to play, while a laudable goal is not, in my view, you know, substantial hardship that would qualify you for a variance. So now you've come back with this, and I think we have a couple of tough interpretations to make, is this a nine-foot wall, is it a two, is it one four-foot wall and one five-foot wall? If it's a nine-foot wall, I think you're still not going to make the hurdle with the variance, but if it's a four-foot wall and a five-foot wall, you know, it might, you might not need the variance, so, that's going to take, I think, some deliberation and thought about whether, you know, the implications of interpreting it one way or the other, having just seen the plan today, I'm not really prepared to, to come out on that. Yeah, and I also wouldn't feel comfortable voting without input from the boards, I mean, town engineer.
Here's my advice on the wall issue, I would take your plan and go talk to the building commissioner about your plan for the wall issue, I, I... He could blindside us and interpret it differently. That, that...
Can we close the meeting, the public hearing, and then based on the building inspector's interpretation, then you can make a vote the next time, so we stop on coming?
We've got town engineer, too. No, because the public hearings, at that point, it's closed, we can't take any testimony, whether it's you or a town official.
I think one thing, just to say a little bit differently, but it's the same thing the chairman is saying, is, is that, one, we'd like to, I understand what you're saying about conditioning the town engineer, but we haven't heard from her whether whatever is remaining, since she hasn't seen it, can be handled through a simple review and approval, or whether it would require some conditions added by this board to enforce it. So sometimes, when she's had enough time to review it, she might say, I haven't reviewed everything, but these are things that could be handled in a final review and approval, so we've heard from her, because she had an opportunity to look at it to a certain degree. In this case, because it's only come in today, she hasn't even told us whether she is capable of handling, so that's a little bit uncomfortable.
No, I understand, but the only, the only comment that I'm making is that we had a nine-foot wall, we moved that wall closer to the house by five feet, so when it was with nine-feet wall, she gave the comments of what, everything on the comments, when the wall was nine feet, was approvable, so now that we're making it even better, we are moving it another five feet.
The second point that I was going to make with you is, if you haven't yet reviewed this with the building inspector, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, you know, a significant issue about granting a special, I'm sorry, granting a variance, is whether you're able to come up with a design that can be in conformance with the bylaws, right? Because our job is to try, I don't know whether he, as the zoning enforcement officer, has looked at this alteration, to the point where maybe you have come within compliance of the zoning bylaw, and don't even need a variance, or another way said, you know, that would be, if this is a compliant design, right, then we wouldn't have a reason to grant a variance, because you don't need one, so, you know, and you have to consider, as an...
Well, is it, does it...
One last point, you have to consider as an applicant, if this board goes forward on the zone, the variance, and denies it, as opposed to talking to the zoning enforcement officer, to determine whether you still need it, which is entirely your decision, and choose to withdraw it prior to an adverse decision, that's something you have to consider.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, can we withdraw the request for a variance and go for a special permit, if the building commissioner feels that we have to come back for a variance through you guys, we'll, we'll file again for a variance, but let's make a decision for, right here, right now, for a special permit? Can we...
I'm lack of information, then, no, lack of information, I do not have my engineer's information.
On the fill?
And that's how I will vote, if he's insisting on a vote, I have, yes, I have both, I have lack of information on both.
That's reasonable, I just wanted to...
That would be my call.
Okay.
If you want a decision.
I guess we don't have a choice.
I'm not kidding. I feel we need both.
I would feel a lot more comfortable hearing from Maggie.
Yes.
That's fine.
You certainly could vote on the special permit if you want, and we, I don't think we need any information on that. It could. Yeah, I mean, it may not be what you want, but we certainly could vote on it. I just feel comfortable having Maggie.
Well, if you guys feel strongly that we better do it, and, I mean, we only have been here five times, we come another time, that's not a problem.
Our town engineer is fantastic on drainage, I want to hear her.
That's fine.
I think in fairness to the board, while we've heard you many times, you received a plan the day of the hearing, that doesn't give the appropriate folks the chance to review it, is not to be laid at our feet, so, I think in the future, if you're going to make any further changes, you know, please get it to us a little bit faster, thanks.
So we'll come on the next meeting.
It's only another two weeks, three weeks.
I'm already filled on September 20th.
Yeah. Yeah.
That one's full. All right.
What are, what are the three that we have on?
Burns. Continents are up tonight, and you want...
'Cause it burns, yeah.
That's warm again.
Are we, we're gonna continue, we need an extension, 'cause it's, uh, August 30th, just saying.
If you think we're gonna have information that's gonna be beneficial to have for your, for the deliberation and the vote, you know...
All I know is Maggie is the queen of drainage, and this area requires a lot of...
Of course. But I don't wanna, I don't, I mean, that's what I said, but Maggie could come back and say the drainage is fine.
She may, she may not.
But, but I'm saying, I don't wanna give any, I, I, I just wanna be honest and say, you know, if there's other issues, there's other issues. I don't wanna say, you know, if, I don't wanna get anyone to say, oh, if Maggie comes and it's fine, then it's, and it's, and we're saying, you know, we're okay with it. So I just wanna have expectations.
Well, I'm not okay, but I'm not our favorite for the basic premise, so...
But that's what I'm trying to get to here, so...
That, that...
I don't think Maggie coming to...
As an adverse decision, why make a...
Yeah, so it doesn't, it wouldn't make any difference.
I don't think Maggie coming to tell you that the drainage is okay.
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue with anything. I think I'm pretty clear how I feel about this, that I don't see the hardship, quite frankly, and so...
That's, I'm just trying, you know...
Yeah, no, so if you wanna get to agree, that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I'm just letting, I, you know, I'm, I'm done, you know.
Yeah.
You've been here enough, so I don't wanna get any expectations either.
Put an O for Maggie, only to find an adverse decision.
Well, we can...
Even though we got what we did.
Well, if you make it conditional that we would satisfy the town engineer, we'll be happy to do it.
That's not what we're saying, though. You don't, you're not, you're not...
One, one other question I, I think would ask. If the zoning enforcement officer finds that this altered plan is in compliance with the bylaw...
Still need the special permit, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, is your feelings affecting the special permit as well, in terms of the fill?
Yeah, I think that's where you're, I think that's a, you know...
That's where I am, yes. That's where I am.
I mean, you can't, even if the walls work, you couldn't do it with all that fill...
Right, no, I would...
Without getting a special permit.
Right.
And which is kind of your idea of that, you know, it creates a situation for the neighborhood that you don't see.
I don't, I don't see it. I don't see any of them. I drove all up and around behind you, I don't see any of that kind of an elaborate. I just think it's, that's how I feel.
I'll say, respectfully...
Yeah.
You, you know, you looked at it, everything else.
Yeah.
I absolutely hear that. I, I've seen very steep slope areas and terracing an area. I think erosion control, you know, runoff, safety of the slope, not, you know, now that we've dealt with the height of it, there are some things on here that I'm pleased with, and I think would be an improvement, particularly where they've staggered it, potentially bringing it in conformance with the bylaw. And that's what I'm always trying to do, is take a situation that's unusual and, and try to bring it closer to conformity of the bylaw. So...
And if it makes you feel any better, the commissioner was here the last time, and when, when you guys proposed the two-wall scenario, he didn't go against it?
You see, he would...
Yeah, we can't go by that, though. Right?
And also, I think you said Maggie observed the drainage test.
No, Maggie, Maggie was going to witness that when we are there with the machines, that's when we're gonna do the testing, and we'll prove to her that we, that the site is big enough that we are, we don't have an issue recharging the, the system.
Go there.
So, that is up to the applicant.
It's, it's gonna be up to you. I, I'm not, clearly, I'm very, having the town engineer's comments is very helpful to a board on any case, especially when there's drainage and other issues we have to deal with. I just don't know if that alone, having those comments, is gonna satisfy board members. So, um...
How many votes do we need to get it approved?
Four.
So four out of six?
Four out of five.
Four out of five. Four out of five, okay. All right, I guess it makes sense to, um, do this last step, and hopefully we can, you know...
Yes, I mean, clearly, I, I'm not, there's no, like, you know, you, you definitely listened to our comments, and you made changes, so I commend you for that. But there's no magic, uh, you know, that if the town engineer's comments come in, she is okay with it, doesn't mean board members here, and we haven't deliberated, but doesn't mean the board members are still gonna be okay with it. It would be helpful for us to have it as we deliberate.
Yep.
Um, it's better to have it than to not have it.
Correct.
And in the interim, it can hurt to have a discussion with a new plan with the building commissioner. But there, you know, again, you still need relief, some, you know, not, I don't know what the, the building commissioner will say, but again, it, it can't hurt to have that discussion, um, 'cause since your plan has changed, I, anytime a plan changes, it's...
Do you want, does that has to go through you guys with the building commissioner, or can we initiate ourselves?
No, I mean, sometimes we get letters from building commissioner or other departments, and, uh, so I, I'll, again, that, I can't, it's your choice, so I mean...
No, that's fine. We'll, we'll gather the inform, we'll, we'll gather the letters from the town engineer and from the building commissioner, and we'll come to you the next meeting, the next available meeting.
Right. It, it's entirely up to you to be applying for the building permit, and whether the building enforcement, zoning enforcement officer, um, has an opinion whether this plan is...
So we'll use this plan to file. Yep. Understood.
And so you, you determine whether, you know, you, you need to proceed with a request, or you wanna withdraw it. That's entirely your choice.
Understood.
But, uh, and I still think there are some concerns that have been expressed by board members that, um, you've heard. So if there's any, you know, if there's any additional information, the hearing's still open from anybody, you know.
Yep.
A hearing's still open for that reason.
Understood, okay.
So I'd say, you know, the more information we have is always better.
Okay.
But again, there's, there's no, I don't wanna have any expectation that if you do A, B, and C, it's, it's approved. Again, you know, I, I, just speaking from what I've heard board members say, I just wanna know, there's some issues that you'll have to, to, to get passed, and, and, you know, and we all have open minds and listen and take, uh, testimony, but, you know, it, you've heard concerns, so...
Okay.
Anything that, I mean, right? I wanna know, have the expectations set.
We are decision and then follow.
All right.
Right, man, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll come to the next meeting?
Before you do, uh, we're gonna request, so you, this is requesting, or you're granting the board additional time to consider the application so that we can... Yeah? I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to accept, um, their, uh, extension until September 30th, 2017. Second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna just put the year.
Oh.
If you want to initial it.
Go ahead and just initial it.
No, not yet.
Any chance we can be for the next meeting?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue, uh, case number six dash seventeen to September 20th, 7:00 PM in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seconds?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
So, are we gonna continue that to the...
Yeah. Continue that to the 20th also, the one that was absent?
Yeah.
Well...
Might as well.
Up to the board.
They don't have to, they didn't come in.
We can just grant it for lack of...
Grant, grant, grant the A.
I mean, uh, yeah, or grant it, or deny it, or...
I'll just continue it. I'll make a motion, uh, to continue the, uh, opening of the public hearing for case number eight, seventeen dash seventeen to September 20th, 2017, 7:00 PM in this room.
Isn't it seventeen seventeen?
Oh, did I say, oh, sorry. Yeah, I said seventeen seventeen.
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we do minutes? Since it's like a free tail, we're sitting here like this.
Can you, can you call them?
See if I can get into Boston.
You can definitely find out what's going on.
You gonna what, change your meeting?
No, 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 I'm gonna try to, my uncle's opening a, uh, place in Boston tonight.
Oh, you're gonna go to the city?
Brewery, yeah.
Oh, good, go in.
What's the name, what's the name of it?
Right behind Fenway Park, yeah. I think it's called Monkey Brewery or something.
Isn't that where the old place was?
Well, it's at the first one, there was Tequila Rain, it used to be.
No, but Jillian's?
Yeah, that's where Jillian's is upstairs, yeah.
Just second, get that motion to, uh, continue it.
Bob.
I'm not driving. I'm gonna have to take an Uber.
Uber, yeah, you gotta have fun.
I don't have Uber.
So what are we doing?
Savvy.
I sat with this guy last weekend.
We're doing twenty-one and twenty-six?
I said, I really thought it was Hudson. We don't make it spits beer. I said, we do, that's on the Uber drive. Jesus.
Oh, my God.
So I said, are you driving tonight? He goes, no, I only have to go back to Hudson. So he felt it was okay, and he was like on B and number six. I'm like, oh, my God. Which one is it? Seven, twenty-six?
Yeah.
Well, it's going with twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah. Wrong. I'm surprised they don't peel on that, too. Did you see your vote in there, Bob?
My vote?
I think he's reading, though.
Is that the one on the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-first.
Yeah.
Jersey duly noted that a second vote was taken. Yeah.
Which? Twenty-sixth? That's all that we have to...
Which one is Sam, which one is that?
The, the first one under Mrs. Chivani. Under Mrs. Chivani. He has, she has to fix that.
What's that?
A revote was done, okay. I wonder if she filed anything in there. This is all for Wall Street? One paragraph?
Oh, it's all on video now, right?
It is, there's just so much. I gotta condense it, I mean, I could...
Write a book?
Right, a lot of it's...
Well, I always feel, though, if it's on...
Jim, is there a right to do it like this? Jim Ho, the person that's supposed to be in charge.
Who, um, how do you get, can, are all these videos available?
Welcomemedia.tv, you go to the, um, on-demand section on the homepage.
Yeah, are they archived?
For zoning board, yes, it would be your playlist.
Yep.
Should be totally...
Zoning Board selection, planning board...
But they don't, like, there's, they, they go back to the beginning of when you started filming them, right?
Under Wall Street.
Yeah, last two years.
I just didn't know if there's, I, you know, I'm okay with minutes being less, as long as there's a video, like, see, a lot of towns, sometimes, um, in minutes from other towns I've seen, it will say, you know, see transcript or see video, because it's such a long case, that, that, that's what a lot of towns do, but I just didn't know if these were part of, like, the record.
Like this, like this sentence, Inspector Dave Norton gave different answers to the same questions asked by multiple abus.
Well, that's, that's what the, the public was stating that happened, so I put it in there.
Yeah, that's 'cause that claimed the applicant never, that was what Cheryl Hayes, that was her testimony. She claimed the bill, yeah, yeah, which, that's what she did.
Which she did.
She did, yeah, yeah.
I don't wanna bore you things sometimes, I don't wanna...
It's a good, no, I think that's what she was, I think that's what she was saying.
I know, and I'm derived, I have to look on my phone, oh, another word for this, another word for this.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sound too harsh on these things.
You need a, you need a word for this?
Yes. I just hope all the, he didn't contact the applicant in the line.
Well, this isn't right.
What's all right?
Because it's one, two, three, four, five. It's only five, but it's only five voting members, number six.
Right. Because that was huge for them, too.
Yeah.
But he didn't abstain. He's not a voting member.
You wouldn't know it if you read this, yeah.
No, in the second one, he was silent. He didn't abstain. Only, only the five voting members.
Right.
So, so in other words...
Okay, so I was just putting that, he, they, okay.
Yeah, you just have to...
All right, I'll just put that he...
No, so it would be one, four, zero, and then...
Right.
And then, you can say, if it's Gerald...
You have to do any...
What you could say was not voting.
Okay.
Or you could say, in fa, you know, Murphy in favor, it was the coffee opposed. It's Gerald, not...
Not voting.
Not voting.
Okay, that's fine.
It could be nothing, and this, normally it would be nothing. Normally it would be, he wouldn't be mentioned because he's not voting.
And the decision is not mentioned, but I figured in the minute...
Yeah, fine, yeah.
Change that.
I'm okay with it.
Who would with this one?
What?
Well, they all need to be changed, that, uh, the numbers would...
All right, well, yeah, because then it's the same thing, 'cause I put that he abstained, so it really just be that without this, yeah.
Correct.
And then the other one has them, I think the other one has them, too.
Because it is possible that any one of the five can abstain.
No, 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 it doesn't.
Okay.
So it would be...
Okay.
It only counts up to five, because there's only five, ever, there's only, there's never more than five voting numbers.
Okay.
Um, and then, so it could be four, zero, one, and it would be...
Right, if someone's...
Favor, abstain.
Okay.
This is, yeah.
That it is.
Is it necessary to do, even on things like motions to adjourn the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Six, should that be five, zero?
All of them.
All of them, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't know if that...
So, any...
But tonight, because Jim's not here, it's still...
Correct.
And then, so it could be four, zero, one, and it would be.
Right, if someone's.
Abstained.
That it is.
Is it necessary to do, even on things like motions to adjourn the meeting? Six, should that be five, zero?
All of them.
All of them, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't know if that.
So.
But tonight, because Jim's not here, it's still.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Well.
Unless he mullens.
Associate, associate members always are present, here, they can ask questions, if they ask questions, it goes into the minute.
Okay.
Really what we should be doing is announcing before we vote. Who is voting?
Right.
Who of the five people here are voting? Because it could be the very first case of the night, even though there's six of us here, one had missed a meeting, so was not a voting member on that case.
Okay.
And so therefore, it would be Bob as one of the five voting members. And we're supposed to announce.
Right.
Who's voting before we place the vote.
Okay.
Which we should be more diligent to vote.
And Matt does usually lean over and say who's on it, but it would be.
Better to get it on tape.
And then it would help us, because half the time we've been here, too. And so it's the second year.
Right, so just, okay, I'll.
Yeah. For every action the board takes, it's only five votes.
Yeah.
And then, it's especially like going in and out of executive session, if the five principal members of the boards are here, then they are always the one that votes.
Okay.
The associate does not.
All right.
Then, if it's a matter, if, you know, Jim missed one of the meetings, then even though he's present, when does he want to vote? He could be a non-voting member, because he had missed a meeting, at which point Bob becomes the fifth.
Okay.
It does need to mention under Mrs. Giovanni that it was, that they, that the board felt she should go to the zoning, to town meeting. I had two calls on that, that's what was said up here. Mrs. Giovanni should go to town meeting. That's what was said here. Remember?
Yeah.
I understand we have tape.
Well, there's a, you know, the balance, right, between transcribing it and.
Everybody in the, can you read?
Do you want some?
I wouldn't object to adding something if you'd like.
I would. I just have two phone calls on that, personally, from people that live up there that were not happy. And I said, the board felt she should go to town meeting, that's what you guys said out loud. Mrs. Giovanni, and doesn't say that in there, so that should be put in there. Several board members felt that the applicant should go before town meeting. Just a sentence like that would be fine.
Yeah.
That covers what I said, anyway.
And this is on the?
Mrs. Giovanni.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twelve seventeen, case twelve seventeen. I mean, that was the main reasoning, yeah.
Yeah.
We should leave stuff in the main reasoning.
That was the suggestion, that we couldn't grant her the relief, but if she wanted to pursue it, that she should go to town meeting.
Okay, so.
Making motions?
Yeah, we're gonna start with the executive, the minutes from the executive session on June 21st. So I'll make a motion to accept the executive session minutes for June 21st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, and these are all with the stated amendments. Corrections of the voting, and we haven't gotten to the other correction. So this is the minutes of the June 21st meeting.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And then, with the correction to the voting, and to the.
He was just going over.
Giovanni, case, I'll make a motion to, oh, wait, so we wait before they, that, with the executive session. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the executive session for July 26th.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And then, with the correction to the Giovanni case, and the correction of the voting, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 26th.
Second. All in favor?